Go ahead. All right. All right, Tuesday, June thirteenth. Twenty twenty-three. Seven o'clock calling this meeting of the Timmer Select Board to order. Welcome, everyone who's here and on Zoom. We. Thanks, Gil. Is that your thing that was making that noise?
Yep.
Okay. All right, reviewing the agenda, is there anyone here who is on here for anything that would like to be moved up to the agenda? Alice, are you here for anything in particular?
Roads. We hired.
Okay. Lovely.
And so if we could, I would like to add. Nine, naming a new nine-one-one road. And putting meeting, having you guys set a meeting for Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of June.
Okay.
For some end of the year stuff.
And did we need to add this to the agenda? This is on here, I'm just missing it.
It's on there. Financial set.
Oh, yeah. I see it now. Great. Perfect. Anything else?
We talked last time, but maybe I missed the resolution. Did we want Eric to stay here for a bit for the financials or?
That makes sense. You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, minutes. From our last two meetings, two meetings, does anybody have any? Anything to? Say about the minutes? And done. Thank you for writing them, Gil. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I move we approve the minute.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. All right, citizens input. Anybody have anything for citizens input? No, all right. Public Works Project, this is the tap grant update, which we had a meeting. That meeting was on May seventeenth. And. We were all there as part of the, we were there, it was a joint meeting between the consultant selection committee and the select board. And we. We did most of it in executive session, and then when we came out, we. Voted to. Go with the recommendation that we, as the consultant selection committee, had made to. Award the contract to Dubois and King. Um.
Pending.
Pending negotiation, correct. You guys have anything to add to that? At this point, there's not much else to say. Anything else to add, Gil?
The only thing to add is you're going to discuss it under executive session and then come out of executive session to make your final decision.
Right.
If you think you need.
Right. Yeah. Which? This would be. We all got the information from Stephanie, and we wanted to have that conversation in executive session.
Need to be.
I.
Legally doesn't need to be.
How do you feel, Judy?
I thought from the way Stephanie's email read, we were all in agreement, so.
My feeling, okay.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, so. So we are able to now talk about what we were negotiating, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just trying to make sure I'm following all the rules. We asked Stephanie to go back to negotiate with Dubois and King to see if they could reduce the. The costs involved, and they came back with a. That a ten thousand, was a ten thousand dollar difference?
It was like nine.
Nine.
Eighty-eight or something.
Okay, I was being very generous, eighty-eight thousand dollar difference, which was.
Eighty-eight hundred.
Not as good as I was hoping, but.
Eighty-eight thousand, they lost money, which would be awesome.
Um. And so we, I believe. All agreed that that was what we were going to move forward with.
Well, you are appreciative.
We are going to vote on it tonight. I'm just going over what we talked about, what we, what the negotiations were, and so now we need to have a motion to. To award, officially award Dubois and King the contract for the salt and sand shed. Yeah, I thought I had that. But. My phone has died.
Mine did too, left it in the truck.
Can we get that exact number, so we? Put it in.
No, that's for the engineering, right?
This is for the engineering, yeah.
The, like, the, like. Earthworks engineering, not the engineering of the structure.
Correct.
It's just. Site work. Site work. Trish bones. So there's still going to be more engineering in a structure.
Hopefully, this whole thing is going to help us figure out if we can afford a structure and what that structure is being, if we can't, then I will, I will go change it.
Yeah.
And we had. Talked about, what was it, the twenty-five percent mark, if we were.
Yes.
Concerned, we would stop at that point.
Yep.
If you guys reach a twenty-five percent of the money that you have. That the town has, and you weren't, you weren't able, you weren't going to see a resolution of completing the project, is that correct?
There was. Twenty-five percent of the.
The total cost. If you guys reach twenty-five percent of your projected cost and you're, and it doesn't look like it's going to be feasible, you're going to cut your losses and.
Yeah, I would have to go back and look at what we had.
Look, it's a good grant.
It's the, because the grant, there's how much we have, and then there's how much the grant has, and the grant is paying. For what we have spent so far.
Yeah, I think the idea was also to look at what other grants were coming that maybe we could apply for, and hopefully that would help offset future costs.
Yeah, it seems like there will be the opportunity to apply more grants, and the timing timeline on this is not.
Fifty-three thousand and sixty dollars.
Isn't that? That Vtrans grant going to be coming back around again?
Yeah.
Yes, but in September, we're not going to be willing to them.
Right. But we have time to even apply. But anyway, Public Works. So we need to have a motion to award Dubois and King. For fifty-three thousand and sixty dollars. What would be the correct wording there? Consultant or engineering?
This is, yeah, this is engineering. Design.
Design and engineering.
House proposal for. Engineering.
Design and engineering. All right. I will make a motion that we award Dubois and King. For fifty-three thousand and sixty dollars for design and engineering of the potential future salt and sand shed. That sound? Good? Right, second.
Was I gonna?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need to dissolve the consultant selection committee because we. We are that, we have, we have selected the consultants, but that we still have work to do in working with the consultant.
And now you're going to be from the steering committee.
Right. Um, have a motion to dissolve the consultant selection committee.
So will we dissolve the consultant selection committee?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
That doesn't mean that you don't get to ask people to help you.
Right.
Decisions if they come back or.
Right.
Yeah, I think Eric and.
Right.
I still wouldn't be involved.
Absolutely. Yeah. All right, moving on, highway.
Um. Well, we're getting ready for pavement, ditching and all that happy stuff. Um. It's just, it was the usual, whereas I think so, I got a couple of other questions for you, but. Um. When we get to, I guess it would be on the financial.
Yes.
I'm wondering, we got the grant. For Patriots Culver?
Yes, we did get the grant from Patriots Culver, but not preparing.
Right.
Right. So do we want to, it's not. A hundred percent official, right? The grant?
Right, it was recommended by. Brian Sanderson, it has to go to Montpelier before it comes back with paperwork and documentation and. And for this little grant that we're applying for now. When you need to schedule it, they're not going to have paperwork back to us until September. Yeah, we're supposed to get it done the end of twenty, twenty-three or the beginning of twenty twenty-four. So it's probably going to be filed before we get the paperwork for that grant.
What I'm wondering is, I was going to ask the Snapboard if we'd want to order that culvert or not. It is a.
I think probably we should wait till we get the official, okay? Because we get it in paper before we get the paperwork, they're not going to reimburse us for.
Is this something we can get through the state? Wasn't that one of the things that we were able to get through there?
Think we use the state. Whatever, yeah, whatever they call it, pricing, state pricing, that's it. I think we did use that, that's what they gave us, but, I mean, we can wait, it's just, I don't know how long it's going to take to. To make that culvert, so, I mean, if it's two monthly time on it and we get the paperwork in two months, then we're going to be.
Right, I would be comfortable if. Before our next meeting, although our next meeting is on the twenty-seventh, it comes in and it's official, I would be comfortable with ordering.
Yeah, if it's.
We'll just wait. We'll make it. Um. We would like, so. On the summer work plan, I guess we're kind of muddling things together, but there's that maple tree. By the swamp. Um, east side of the swamp.
No.
Yes, but you drive around. Um. It's on the list to get moved out of there, and I was wondering if we can have Dan. Help us remove the stump, if that's okay. Um.
Where are we talking?
The top of Bonetford Mountain, go through the swamp coming this way, and that tree on the right.
Yep.
That you go around, there's ledge under it. Um, so grinding is probably not an option. So probably we're going to, if we can get the stump off of there, then we can see about getting rid of the ledge. Push that over a little bit and get a ditch in there, because that's one of our segments that does not meet.
Um. Yeah.
It's more monitor stuff.
Yeah.
So, but I.
Dude, you say you want Dan to pull the stump?
Yeah, I want Dan to give us a hand, he's going to just pull that stump off of there and maybe see what, if that rock moves underneath it or not, and.
Because his machine is bigger than ours.
Yeah, it's a. Five times. It's a, yeah. It has a lot more horsepower. Um.
And when we have Dan doing work. Where does that come in? Just as a line item, if that just didn't, like. Extra help, where do we have that?
You know, extra help to sell, we contracted. Contract, if we don't, we haven't paid out on the contract, you're going to show up there.
Okay.
Contracted services.
Okay.
He wasn't around a hundred dollars an hour for that.
Yeah.
He's probably a little bit more now.
I say that's actually not bad.
No, it's really good. Really, really good. So he's given us.
Yeah, do we, and I'm just trying to make sure, like, do we have, is there a line item for, I don't see contracted services, I see winter contracts, but.
Typically, we have their four grant projects.
Yeah.
So he gets paid out of there, but.
We're doing some.
The. One where we do the crack ceiling special projects.
Yep.
He could get paid out there.
Okay. Is that something we need to think about for? Budgeting next year is putting in a line item for extra help. Or just having special projects be. Okay. That's fine, I just want to make sure that we keep track of. You know, if it comes out of the one place and we. Have a budget for it, and an idea of how much it's going to cost.
So I would like to have him, while we're there, we want to change that culvert at the top of. Or around the corner, head down Cob Hill, want to change that first culvert rig there, too, we're going to pave over the top of it, and it's a metal one. And it's been added on to, and there's a sinkhole at the end, so. That's got a lot more traffic, I've changed a couple on the lower traffic. Car roads, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see one done on the higher traffic. Wouldn't, you know. Something that's done on before. So I'd like to have him help us do that, too. I don't think it's more than a day, it's probably, I'm betting it's half a day, but. He was more than happy to help us with that, too, so we'll just cut it for him, and we'll flag and do whatever we need to do, but our crew will work with him, and we'll just get it in, get it back building. And now. Soon as that work is done, we're ready for you. Basically, we're going to see the mulch, the bottom half of that tomorrow. And I'm. We should be good to go. Those are trees up near the top, they're culturally, they're called, we found out changes. Yep. Um, is that, you know, part of the project we were talking about with the safety thing, that different grant? Yeah, that would be.
It'd be down below.
There's no. This safety grant is cutting trees from one forty, so we get, spend. Seven days, eight days would be the thirty-five thousand, so whatever trees we can get scooped up in that.
Yeah, I would just wonder if those were. On that, I see you've got a mark, that would be part of that grant, yeah.
That's, that's that grant, the other thing is just work we're going to do before we do the paving.
Yeah, we can do those after we pay, but I want to get that one, that one maple, I want to make sure that's gone before we pay, I want to try to shove that over and get a ditch in there. But that's the only one that we have to do before we pay.
The other ones would be, if we get, once we get the grant, then we would go.
So you're saying that some of this work that Alex is doing could be paid for through grants? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, no, it would be if we don't get the paperwork back till fall, it's going to be next summer before we cut these trees.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're talking.
Yeah, yeah, no, it'll be, it sounds like that'll be a next summer, I think, at this point. Um.
Moves being paid for out of the, that part is going to get paid for out of the, um. The crack ceiling.
Yeah, the tree, the tree and the, help us with the culvert, like I said, it shouldn't be maybe two days. Or, so it shouldn't be.
It sounds like me, do you guys have anything in mind? If I consensus, we agree, that's fine.
Looks better to cut the pavement now than after today.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would suck.
Oh.
Do that.
Thank you.
That's the next list, I don't want the list.
Is that what we were looking for?
Yep.
Yep.
That's very. Important.
Happens if you find a pink one. Result, perfect.
I'm okay with it, but I guess that's got plenty of visibility.
It would definitely catch your attention.
Yeah. We're going to be the only one around.
Anybody have anything to add or comments?
Well, I would like to ask the same thing I asked last time, are we replacing the grader just because it's on? The list to be replaced, or are we replacing it because it needs to be replaced? And what's wrong with it, is it, can we, you know, for the amount that we use it, can we fit another four or five years out of it, or? I think that needs to be discussed before we just say, yeah, it's on the list, I suppose, and it was going to be my question.
Right, so. My understanding with how the. You know. Equipment replacement plan was put in place, was so that we were. Trading in our machines before they were. No longer valuable and replacing them before they needed more work to upkeep. And. From looking through the spreadsheet, it is all planned out. And while it is. I think there can be some flexibility there. I feel like that was. Part of the planning for the future was so that we, we always had machines that were working. When we needed them, and we weren't spending time fixing machines. And we were able to get good value for the machines that we had purchased previously. I don't know how either of you feel about our used equipment purchase.
Um, the other thing too is, I mean, the money is going to be there, the money's not going to go away, we're not going to spend it on something else, it'll still be there, right, greater, it's just the question is. You know, I'm going to play this at this point in time, so that's. You know. Are all the tires gone, we just bought new sport, is it leaking, you know, what, what shape is it in, I mean, we're going to get ten thousand for it, pay fifty. Number.
Um.
Eric, do you want to speak to that at all?
It's got some leaks, I mean, we fixed some of the leaks, though. It's. Thirty, twenty-five years old, so there's. Going to be leak issues and stuff like that, we've got after the ones that we can get. Um. The base, the biggest thing is. Parts are difficult.
It's a champion.
Yeah, parts are difficult, and I'm afraid that we're going to get a part. That's not going to be available, and right now is, you call them and you, they go, oh, hold on. We've got to go upstairs and get the paper book. And come down and cross-reference this, that, and the other thing, and it was like for the oil pressure sensor, you know, and it was like.
So.
Something.
At one time, we did talk about having somebody come and look at it to kind of evaluate it, to give us an idea if it was. Worth keeping, worth trading. Is that something?
Youngs used to do that, who do we know, if there's anybody who does that anymore?
I have no idea, I've never heard of that.
I mean, if this, if somebody comes and says. You're going to put more money in this thing that's worth. Over such, such a time.
Yeah, basically, I was told they're worth ten thousand dollars if they're running, if they're not running very well, thank you.
Um, and well, that's the other thing, too, we got to look at is. When. Is it feasible to do it relatively soon while it's still worth something? Or if you're going to run it another few years. And it's not worth anything, and you're not going to get a trade. I think, I think it. Do you know anybody that does that?
I don't know.
Youngs used to do it for buying equipment, Youngs have been there, but. They went on, they retired, so I don't know.
I'm sure that there's a, you know, I'm sure that there's a service somewhere that'll audit heavy equipment.
What about, isn't there a. Caterpillar place? To put for Brandon on seven? Or someone rental? Put in a place? I didn't know if they might do something like that.
I mean, usually it'd be the people who are either selling it, you know, they'd be coming to give you a free appraisal or something, or. Give you a sense of what it, maybe it's not free, but.
If you only go and get ten grand for it. Run it into the ground and then lay it alone.
But if you had someone that said it'll get you four more years before you have major problems, like he says, run it in the ground and then.
Right.
Right.
Right, but it amazes if it goes down.
Right.
Then how long is it fit to replace it?
Right. I mean, if you do. We do have a, an issue with it.
I mean, we've had.
It's going to put that.
These wheels were. Then we got three more, two more, two or three more of those at twelve hundred dollars a piece. Plus mounting and balancing and, or not balancing, but mounting and reloading. Oh, again, it's in your court, how many have you got now? I think three. Like we've got three. So there's three more, twelve hundred dollars a piece. If this, they choose to.
Crack. Or crack.
Own face.
And how long have they had this for here?
Used when they bought.
Yeah, but how long has the town been?
That one, I've been here for, working on eight years. They had it.
Shouldn't say on the. I think it was tell on the, for the equipment place.
How many hours does it have on?
Ninety-six hundred. The town of Johnson, a little bit, I want, like, eight hundred, something like that.
Lot hours.
Yeah, I see you're, you're, usually you're eleven thousand hours in excavators, the end. What's it minus, so you're not. That far from the end.
Yeah.
This is, it's a hard decision to make, because it's like a car, I mean. You keep it, or it could go, training could go. I mean, it's just. You don't know.
And what is in the best interest of the town, that's, you know.
Right.
Is it?
Keep it and hit another one and run the old one into the dirt, and I'm all about that, as long as you've got a backup to. You know. You get a windrow in the middle of the road. And your grader's dead, you've got to tell your buddies from other towns, and hopefully they're not grading to solve the problem you just created. So. I did go, I remember once, knew that. But I mean, it's, it's. Doable, but.
Yeah. I feel like. I would like to move forward with replacing this grader, maybe if there's other equipment that's. Like a John Deere or a Caterpillar that has parts that are more easily available, but like, hearing you say that. The Champion parts are harder to find, and. Parts don't seem to be getting easier to find. Um, and not, having had it for how long we've had it, and. Um, you know, I think it's something we could consider for. Equipment we, we have that's. In better condition, that has more easily accessible parts, but in my opinion, it's worth replacing this.
Get one. One. You know.
Um. So do, so roughly, when did we get it?
Doesn't show up on spreadsheet, hers starts in two thousand and sixteen. I mean, I can. No, I was, I can tell you, just give me a minute here.
Well.
Spirit of times, I can.
It's a rough idea, I mean.
If it's eight plus years, that doesn't seem like a bad life.
Right.
And another thing, too, is if you, and if we do end up with a John Deere or a Caterpillar. That you can make last a lot longer. Because they're named brands. Champion is not. A name.
Anymore, I mean, it's one of those Volvo bottom, that's what happened, and then they dissolved them. So the parts are out there until they're not.
Yep.
Well, the John Deere, do you ever tell me, and this is the salesman. And they're not making graders the last twenty-five years anymore. They figured out that they're lasting too long, and if a salesman tell you that.
That's pathetic.
We bought it in twenty-eleven.
Ooh.
Were that it. In July, we'll have had it.
Twenty years, twenty-two years?
Well, twenty-three minus eleven would be twelve years.
Twelve years.
Yep, we can get twelve out of the next one.
Yeah. So. This would be to, you know, going into our next fiscal year, which is already the year that it's planned to be replaced for, so nothing unexpected. Um.
The one thing with this one, you want to become Johnson, we're selling themselves. And that's. They know it was going to another town, says, I'll tell you anything that is wrong with it, or is it wrong, what to do, this and that. Or if you get it from a dealer, they don't know nothing about it, they ain't going to pay anything about it, they. We have to care for them, watch them.
Well, have that in consideration. So.
Um.
So this is a fourteen-foot low board and a twelve-foot snow wing, is that the size that you were recommending, or is that a different size?
There was one that, well, they were thirteen or fourteen. There was thirteen or fourteen, the whole board's fourteen.
And.
And the reason I say stay with the long one is because you can dip the blade more, so you get better stuff falling out of there, falling the blade making.
Right.
If you got the straighter one, you gotta, you get even more stuff.
Right.
So.
Motion to approve, or you wanna?
So. We need a year like. Nothing older than. Ten years.
You have that one, you say, oh, that's a ninety-nine and you bought it in two thousand and twelve.
That was. Right, but so, so do we wanna not buy anything more than ten?
I think it. You're gonna, it, it all comes down to money.
I was gonna say, what's, for eighty-five grand, are we talking twelve years?
Well, the thing is, is you're looking at John Deere and Caterpillar, which are two of the most. Sawed after machines, especially Caterpillar.
It's more of a. I was told when you drive down the interstate and you see what's working on the roads. It's not because they're the cheapest, it's because they're the best value. And ninety percent of them make it that.
So maybe we do, since we are looking at John Deere and Caterpillar, maybe we can look at a machine that's twelve or. Between ten and twelve years.
Well, it depends on how many hours.
Right, right.
You know, you could get one that's six years old, but it could have twice as many hours as one that's got.
Right.
Are, are we more worried about the hours than the age?
Yeah, yeah, cuz, yeah, yeah.
You have a sense on how many hours changes like there.
Friends have read it and, oh, they don't care.
I don't know enough about machines.
Never had the, it's, that's what happens when you buy used, you just don't know.
Yeah.
Um, so you gotta be, you gotta, when you get there, you gotta go over and find your dome and you're gonna miss something.
So I, maybe looking at a town rig or a airport rig or a.
Yeah, airport rig would be awesome, because they help themselves.
Maybe sur, central surplus can find one there then.
Yeah.
There's. Richie Brothers got quite a few of them, they're out of Pennsylvania. So. I mean, yeah, so hours. Years within reason.
I don't know if we wanna lock ourselves into anything, I mean, I think we gotta go out there, see what's out there and see what we can afford and then. Get the best bang for a buck.
How much research do you think you could do between now and, and our next meeting and just give us an idea of what you're finding for age and hours for the. For the prices? I know it depends on what's out there, but I don't know if you could at least do.
I can, I can make a couple, yeah, I mean, I can see what. I mean, the cat, I talked to the cat guy and he said, well, your seventy-five grand is in the ballpark area for. I didn't even figure, he didn't say how old they're having there. So, I don't, I mean, it's one of those. You get one from around the circle plus, and then have nothing to add.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Twenty, twenty-five year ago, that big one really got, at seventy-five, that was. That's something we really could get.
How many hours do you put on the grader a year?
I'm not positive.
It does get yours, your own.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends on the year, really.
Do you two feel like you need more, more? Like to have more constraints on this before you approve it, if you want more information from?
I love information, I don't know what I need anymore.
Well, I just, like, do we move?
I mean, I think the army surplus thing would be worth, they can look at. I can look at Richie's website and see what they've got, just to get an idea of what they're running.
So do you wanna move this to our next meeting, or do you wanna approve this as it's, or do you wanna?
Prove it as is temporarily, you know, for now, just, and then look at some stuff and.
How long will we have this thing again?
It's two thousand and eleven, so twelve years.
So what's, uh, divide ninety-six hundred hours by twelve?
Well.
Like half, like five thousand hours.
All right, so are we ready to approve this? Your motion? To approve?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve, looking into replacing our Champion grader with a newer one.
I will second that.
No, you're not approving, looking into it.
Approving the.
Okay.
If one of them finds one.
Okay.
That's what this is, is.
Right.
You know, it's in case he finds one.
Okay.
And he needs to buy it on the spot, that's what this is for, if he finds one and he's got time, if we're gonna meet the next. Week or something and he can go back and say, hey, this is what I found, I'm good to go, then the monkey's not on, on his back, it's on your back. This, this authorizes him to go get one up to seventy-five thousand.
I will not, I will not pull the trigger on the spot.
Okay.
I will, we're not going there.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. So rewording it, giving him permission to.
It would be approving the request.
Yep.
Are you seconding that? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Okay. We've already talked about that a little bit, the small grant. Letter of support. Is that?
This is the small, the small thing for you is a letter of support.
Yeah.
Like I said, but I don't think it's in the package, I just remember today.
Yeah, remember.
And it's due on Friday, it took some pictures, I think there's pictures on the. The table here. With the word. And. I filled out the grant. But it has this little thing. Where if you put more words in, it'll just give you a little plus sign, so you can actually see it once it's printed on.
Oh, that's so frustrating.
It is frustrating. You know, what do you want?
Oh, I had these on my phone.
We wanted to. Remove picks up, mix the trees in right away and forty, which is not a state highway. The. Project description, it's moved, remove trees in right away and one forty to improve visibility and safety, there are curves in the road, there's our. So we're asking for thirty-five thousand, and we have an estimate from. Number two, who's service, at five thousand dollars a day.
What's that one?
And. We, this explains that we have four thousand pieces.
Cause that's history.
We wanna cut trees that are right away that are dead and ash and.
Was that just the?
A lot of my help with the grant.
Oh, God, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna take pictures of all the trees.
Boss of screen.
Yeah. And I have to, even I not do anything.
Yep.
I did send it to. You can cut them at regional planning commission.
Yeah.
And he has not responded back yet, he said, you know, any suggestions you have for us to improve this grant? It's due Friday, so I'm assuming we don't hear from you tomorrow.
Any questions?
Uh, no.
No, thank you, Gail. All right.
But that was. Select word of people consensus to apply for this thirty-five thousand.
Yes, we all signed it and approve it by consensus.
Can you move back to Eric and Rover for a minute?
Sure.
Um, I see. That you've decided not to cut the big tree down here across from Jenkins. But if you look at that at all, there's brush to the north, a lot of it that needs to be cut, cause. That's grown down, hung down, you can't see, I backed into the driveway and then I came over the road. I'm probably on the day on.
That in this grant, this is in the grant, right? We didn't get it cut.
Well, if it's his, then. Have them cut it.
Yeah, they should have gotten it, because it's.
He did cut a lot of it out, what if there's more that needs to be cut?
You see it's hanging down. Almost to the left corner over there. And you can't, you can't see the car. You can look at it, drive as long.
I did back into it once.
So if.
Almost over where we know that little block that hides the home. On that side.
Well, as long as it passes the corner.
This is what he owned here, that they. What he owns, the cemetery is over here. This is where most are, there's a little metal right there that, with a driveway in it.
Do you have his number? His contact info? You want me to contact him?
Remind him to keep the brush down.
You gotta be cutting down, not. Just keeping them. One to the back end, I mean, for their own good.
Right, if he wants to not have to cut his tree down. Right. We did approve it last time, so I don't think we can go back on that at this point, we did ask that he keep the brush down, so that's.
We can ask him to cut some.
We can ask him to cut some brush for them.
Yes. Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, you get out, look at it, you see it's a long way. That really.
Did you both get a copy of his summer work schedule?
Yeah.
You know that?
I didn't.
Did you have any questions about it? Eric, did you wanna, I'll come back to you in just a second, let him go through his summer work schedule.
I know, I, well, that was a while ago, we're working through it, so.
Okay.
Um, nothing's really changed.
Okay.
The one forty job is bigger than I thought it was gonna be.
Same job.
We may not, we may not get to everything, but we're dry.
Can you give Paulus a copy of that, too, yes, just, I've read it already. And then. Did you have something else for that?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Eric about. From Collins down through on the north side. No, we're just gonna see much. I'm just curious as to why, that why it comes from top of here all the way down through it? It's not a connected segment. Next thing, second, yeah, for the stormwater. So, I mean. We can, it's just gonna stop on money. I thought they were seeing over certain percent, you had, only in the connected segments, that's not a connected segment.
All right.
Connected to the water, connected to what represents them. With a connected segment, the ditch goes into a waterways.
Uh, three hundred and twenty-eight feet. From water, is there, their segments are three hundred and twenty-eight feet, so some of them, there's more than one segment, but that is not. That is not one of them, so that's why I. That down below the. Festival shack is gonna wash pretty good, which is gonna wash right in the water from stone. Yeah, we're gonna see it most that, it should slow down enough, since it rolls. You're gonna end up in that, down there at the bottom of it. Yeah.
All right, can we get through to the oil bids? RFP for the land bids.
Was that your last thing?
I had one more, one more thing.
Okay, make it quick, trying to get through our agenda.
Potter Brook project over there, I think it's like more usable over there, with Eric, and look at it. Um, it's actually more dangerous now than what it was before. I don't know, was that designed by somebody?
Was.
Oh, gosh. God, yeah, either that color shouldn't play for long at either side or foot headers on it, we losing a lot of road space. And I suggested last year, you put some reflectors out there, and it hasn't happened, we stuck some. Temporary things up there, well, you meet somebody there at night and it's. It's not good, I mean, the ditches are so deep on both side, I don't know why you went so deep with the ditch on the. Upper side there, knowing it's gonna raise it all up, and there's like four foot.
We didn't dig anything.
Hey, it did, I was there.
Do we? Do we have more permanent reflectors we can put there?
Yeah. But I think you ought to look at it, safety wise, I think you should put stone headers on that, so you can get a little more shoulder there. And you can look at it, you see it on the diamond.
Okay.
Or drive it at night. I keep talking to Eric about it, and he says it's as wide as it was before, but it's just, it's, it's scary because, you know, before the one you could just. Well, heaven knows, you drove a fire truck. There was something to go in.
I drove it out.
It's just. It's a.
We added ten feet to that color, too, so.
Well, because, yeah, we have reflectors, that's a first step, and then we can check it out.
You're want, you're thinking of wanting to add stone to the ditch, you mean?
No. I thought he said.
Well.
Stone headers around the pole.
Diamond stone header on the pole, it wouldn't be bad. If him saying, you go, you go look at it, you see what I'm talking, right? You stop and get out, market, and you see what I'm doing.
All right, we can put it on our agenda for our next meeting. All right. RFP for fuel oil bids, so we have to go out to bid for fuel. So there are two different RFPs. If you both have a chance to look over these. Yep, anybody have any comments or edits?
But I noticed that, though, we didn't do it last year, because we were happy with. Same thing, uh, we didn't do it during COVID, so.
Right.
As I was looking over the procurement thing, it did say we're supposed to go out to bid for paving and salt and. Fuel.
Yeah.
It is over ten thousand dollars.
Right.
And I don't know. If we're gonna use more diesel fuel or. Well, based on answer, right, it's what was in their condition was.
Yeah, that look right to you, Eric.
And I know we're gonna keep the old garage heater, and it's probably not gonna be any less heated than it was, so.
Right.
Yes, it's a.
And chances are, Champlain's gonna get it again, so.
Thank you. You're gonna follow the.
Over ten thousand, it should be following your protocol. It's that to eight or nine dealers that I know of, I had the list.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, so we need a motion to approve these two RFPs for fuel oil bids. And we'll make a motion that we approve these two RFPs for fuel bids.
Bye.
Second. All in favor? Hi.
All right.
Hi.
And just make sure the record stays intact here, is Bob Noble helped the town develop these a number of years ago. Bob's gone now.
His legacy lives on, and our fuel oil RFPs. Yeah. Um. All right, review this clear twenty-three financial reports.
Well, you have the monthly report, you don't have the year-to-date report, and I'm still thinking of that.
We do that at our next meeting on June twenty-seven.
Doing that on the twenty.
Seven, yes, okay.
As you need to the end of the year, if you get. Eric can find out, you know, whether the purchases are gonna happen.
Yep.
At one point, you wanted to. Buy something else, Eric?
Well, I don't know if you decided. There's a story. That goes along with that, and I'll share with you. The twenty nineteen truck is gonna be ready for rear tires by fall. So the way everything has been, I says, well, let's go see what the availability is. Well. Wanted to get the ones like our on Ron's truck, because he likes them and they're working well. So you have to go to Goodyear, Goodyear is Ray Bean, Ray Bean said, oh, there's. I can't remember what he said, there's two hundred and something of those tires on order right now. And this was a couple weeks ago. And, uh, I'm like, who? Well, this is when are they gonna make some, he goes, I, I don't know. I'm like, he goes, probably it's gonna be a month or two. And I'm like, well, why don't we order eight? And then we have them. Well, he called me a week later and said, your tires are here. I'm like, well, now. I'll throw it into the year court, if we wanna get them at this fiscal year, or we wanna wait. But looking at the. Estimate. Estimate, um. We're like, we have like eighteen. Nine thirty left for this year, is that, if we get our grant? I did the math correctly?
Eighteen one thirty.
Yeah.
Eighteen thousand.
Pick the bottom number and you subtract the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar paving grant. That's a negative right now.
Right, right, well, we're getting a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the paving grant, and we're giving thirty-six for product here.
Right, but you've got Potter Brook in there already, right?
We need.
Cause that's a positive number?
But it's bigger than, doesn't it more than?
We spent forty-eight, it's part of that seven ninety-six. But we're gonna be reimbursed thirty-six thousand of that. So our net amount is gonna be twelve, so the. The reimbursement we're gonna get is the hundred and seventy-five, we're gonna get two hundred thousand dollars, so. You know, you have the money.
Okay.
You're a hundred and fifty-six in the whole now, we guess it's one thousand pounds, so. Still gonna have fifty of them.
That's better than I thought. So, it's up to you guys if you wanna. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna need them.
Because I'm, I'm, well, with this little caveat in there, I'm assuming that we're gonna also reimburse the highway for. The town garage expenses, but that shows up if you need the report.
And finally, I mean, this.
How much are they, curious?
We don't know.
Yeah.
Is this under fifty thousand?
Seven hundred and ninety-five dollars each, so I ordered that one home on. Uh. Sixty-three sixty. Is what it is. Sixty-three sixty, and that's with, that's with state price.
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
You don't wanna know what it is without state prices, because the guy at Pete's. Don't, he says. That was the guy at Pete's said, go to Ray Bean.
Oh, yeah.
I was up at around that year today, and a guy ordered a skid steer, mask is there. A skidder. Fire.
Yeah. Two thousand dollars.
Twenty is two thousand five hundred, just shy of twenty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's. It's oil. It's oil.
All right. Does anybody have any? Comments or find, anybody wanna say anything about Eric buying the tires now or? In a couple weeks?
I'm just gonna put them in the trailer then, when we get ready. But then I know where they are.
Yeah. I'm fine with them coming out of the car in this year. I wanna say, oh, away, yeah.
Well. I mean, if you don't. If you don't, and you pass on it, you're in the risk of not getting them in the fall.
Right, that's what I was scared of, when it's at two months, I'm like, oh, let's just order, we know it'll be in next year's.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Does anybody have any comments or questions for? The reports, or anything else? Yell, did you have anything you wanted to talk about in these, or we'll just go over everything at our next meeting?
On the end of the year highway report.
Okay.
Next month.
It's a little hard with the months ago.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I can do it as.
Yeah.
Not worth it, it's bad, so, but we should be.
Yeah. Um.
Within budget.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So, we're gonna do that Tuesday, it's twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We kind of proved these. As well as the.
Yep.
Warrants and orders, does anybody have any question for the warrants and orders?
All right, I feel my question, she nicely answered it. And you guys didn't catch it.
She smiled at me, what do you want? We.
That had to do with the couple of payrolls and highway, or.
There are a lot of holidays for women in, in May. From column.
Whoops.
That's funny, I didn't know that. Is that being changed?
Well, it fixed it.
Okay.
Um. Wrong, you had put. Holiday and it was actually vacation.
Yeah.
And Eric had holidays, but they were floating holidays, but Judy didn't know that about the floating holidays, so. I sent her the, the personal policy.
Yep, I appreciate that, thank you. All right, now we're going to set the salary and pay schedule for.
Starting July.
Yep. And.
So, I tripped and multiplied everything by five percent, which is what we discussed, right?
Yep.
Damn, we're here again already? Seems like we just did that.
We'll look at it.
Well, we, we did all the planning and then we're, it's all going to be implemented. But in July, we did it all in the fall and that's what gonna be. My question.
And, and the auditors like to see that it was actually authorized.
Right.
You know, not that it was just.
Yeah, do we have a sense of how many more hours the listers are gonna be working, and how many of those hours will be at the twenty-five dollar an hour rate?
Um. I, the. The reappraisal, or for the, the brand list for twenty twenty-three is we're working on our, our current group.
Yep.
It was just for the reappraisal, that would be twenty-five dollars. I can look up the last time you did it, two thousand and sixteen, how many hours it was, were about the same operations.
Yeah.
He consulted well, and he goes to any property, and one of us goes to.
And it's.
It's the.
And we, yeah, and it just.
I mean, we have eighty-six thousand dollars.
Right.
We're afraid of funding, he's not gonna be more than thirty-eight thousand.
Right.
And we might end up spending ten, fifteen.
All right.
But it is. Since it's up down, you know, twenty-five bucks an hour is.
Yeah.
Way cheaper than if you're gonna hire. Affirm the commitment, if you can't get the firms in.
So, yeah, no, I was.
We just thought it would be more in keeping with what other listeners are doing.
Yeah. And it's only for just.
They're just.
Just for the reappraisal. Anybody have any questions? Judy, do you have any questions? We did all this in the fall, so we set all this up.
Except for the lister part.
Except for the listed part, which is why I was asking questions about it.
No, no, not really, I guess.
Okay. Then. Maybe like to make a motion to approve it? I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Yeah.
Here, a second.
Second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Okay. And then. When we're trans, this is transferring the expenses from the Capitol Building to the highway.
But that is.
That number.
That number at the end of the report, sixty-eight thousand and seven dollars. Um. It was about thirteen thousand dollars, it was salaries.
Yep.
That, that came out of there. For the highway budget, that's why there's some savings in the highway budgets.
Yeah. And so, that'll leave. How much in them?
It would.
That, yeah.
Never mind. Currently, there it is. Hundred and seventy-two thousand. And we go with south dead for two hundred and seventy-two thousand. Take out sixty-eight. Two hundred thousand.
You know what the sad part is? Low engineering, you do it.
Yeah.
We didn't tell anybody?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, well, I'd say we could put it up back, but now with drones and cameras, everybody sees everything.
They'd be our luck, we'd do it, and somebody would see it. Will our own solve.
Yeah, I thought you guys could do that.
Do you?
We can do it until you get caught.
Does anybody have an opinion on whether we move this money to the highway?
Uh, no, really.
Reimbursing the highway? Currently, the highway has some leftover funds.
Right, you're gonna have more leftover fund, so if you wanna wait until the twenty-second, decide this. Just that would give you a little bit more money for it.
Yeah.
Earn a little more interest.
Let's wait.
Sounds good, I love interest.
Not that right now.
All right. Um. So, if anything we need, Eric, or.
Well.
Do we need him for the follow-up?
Generator do list.
Well, the follow-up to do this, the generator grant that we need. And for that, that makes sense.
Is that done?
It's almost done. The generator grant.
That's. That's been supposed to be on the.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Do you need to add one to the garage? I figured it out.
Yeah, these are the bids for the generator grant.
So, basically, what I think we need to change on here is this to date, but it's gonna be the twenty-seven.
By risk getting done to the generator grant, in case we need Eric for that, is that what we're doing?
You know, who's this one, you know? Now, but you could ask the. It's like what? They haven't figured out how they're gonna spend their ARPA money yet.
So, we have it on our agenda to review the ARPA list.
Well, mostly the ARPA thing is on the agenda.
We don't forget to spend the money.
Announce that. I checked with the leading cities and towns, and because you have a dedicated fund, capital fund. You can set aside money from there, like, you know, a hundred, a hundred thousand or something that could go into the Salt and San Shenzhen. You can't start a rainy day fund with the money, but if you have a fund that's already created, a reserve fund, you're allowed to put it there, because. In order to spend it for anything else, voters would have to authorize it. So that's. How you can.
Stipulations, got a low one.
Wouldn't that still be contingent on the voters approving the budget? If you, if you move that money back and forth? You know?
It, it's gonna go from ARPA into the capital fund. It can't be spent out capital fund except for. Buildings, or if you want, the select board wants to spend it for something else, they would have to go back to voters and say, hey, we want, we decided we, we need a brand new grader for four hundred thousands, and we want money to be there for that. Oh, you hadn't thought of that, huh?
Oh, I had.
That's.
I didn't dare ask.
Yeah.
That's, that's the way we can, we can put it away, and we don't, because we're not gonna have building anywhere, and by the time we have to have them, we spent.
That's why we can think about it and we can. Yeah.
At a ten point, you want me to sit down?
We need to have it on our, yeah, I mean.
Make a decision, I mean, I think one of the proposals is to have. Keep twenty-five thousand just in case something happened. And then, spread it out, sprinkle it out some, and then.
Yeah.
Also.
And not knowing what our. Our tap grant situation would be. All right. Um, follow-up to-do list. I don't think we have a copy of that.
I think we're, we went over it last week.
Yeah.
That's more, we just got left on the.
So, I think we're good, Eric, I think you can. Cut out, unless you really wanna stay.
You guys are almost through it.
We're getting there, getting there.
Rock my agenda. My tooth and go home.
No.
You know, there's a tree on one forty.
Hey.
Maybe someone there.
We kept you just one of them.
Hey.
I'm right on it.
Um. If, is it, involve a power wire?
Cool.
We all.
Right.
Have fun with that.
Thought it wasn't cow's out on one forty or anything. Can't be my area, um. All right.
So, anyway, the RFP that Kathy did.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh. Are we gonna be able to get these in and out by June twenty-third, is that doable?
This, yes, they're going out tomorrow morning.
Okay.
To prove it, just a couple of things I have to do, and emailing it to the contractors that we had, Matt Bory and.
Okay.
Stubbs and Kathy's.
Okay, so they're gonna be able to get right back to you.
Around here on the website, and this is.
Okay. Right, yeah, I remember that email exchange that happened.
Um. The other thing is, the work I will bring.
Yep.
The budget for work. I don't think it's gonna be more than ten thousand, so I don't know if we need to go up bid on.
There you are.
It was complicated too much here, but it would be nice if we could get that work done at the same time as.
Right.
These are here, so I might stick a letter in with this, to the contractors, to say, oh, by the way, while you're here doing this. Grant work, we also want this done, so can you give us a price on what it's gonna run?
Yeah.
Term of use from there to there, and I guess we need to figure out. We're just gonna have them go to a box over there for now.
It would be nice if they could, uh, if you put a sub-panel up for us in. Some room over there that we can, but it would probably be, you know, uh, uh. It's, it's gonna need its own service disconnect on the outside. And the sub-panel, and I can have letter too, for, basically, so we can move it and stop it.
Yeah.
Or.
So, if you can help me figure that out.
Here.
Before you go home.
Yeah.
So I can just type it up and send it to them.
Yes.
Great.
Perfect.
Comments? Edits, no comment. Looks good. All right. Motion to approve.
And we approve the RFP for the generator now.
I second it.
All in favor?
Alright.
Right. I've been in inclusion reappearance.
Um. Oh, we need to know who's on it now, or?
Uh.
Is this? We don't want.
Yeah. Think I know, but.
I haven't had anybody else volunteer for. Me on the E and I, or the.
Oh.
Energy committee. For the.
Recreation.
No, this is another one that is. You did a couple of people. It was in channels.
I saw it.
So nobody, nobody has volunteered for any of those. And your committee, I sent emails to the people that were interested the last time, and they're going to come on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, great.
And I said, the select board wanted a vision or, you know, what they foresee the responsibilities of the committee being. So when you did your annual appointments, you did everybody but the E and I committee.
Correct.
And right now, the members are Todd Dennis, Kim Harbaugh, Lotar Smajinbaugh, Melody, Emma Weatherhaw, Rainbow, Met, Meadow, Mike, Sher Johnson, and Logan stepped off.
And Emma had, she said that she also, she doesn't live in Timmefest anymore, so she was going to step off the committee as well.
Well.
Um. Huh.
So if you don't.
I wouldn't.
You could reduce the number to seven.
Yeah.
Or you could keep looking for more volunteers.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you did ten at the beginning because that's the new volunteer.
Um. Right, we don't have to have any certain number of committee members to.
Well, this is something you guys made up.
The select board usually says, you know, you would point a certain number.
Yeah.
Is this, so maybe once the select board changes the number.
Right.
The select board wants to change the community's number.
Right, we can change it.
Board has that.
Yep. Well. I would like to appoint Kim, Lotar, Rainbow, Melody, Todd. I don't know if it's a bad form to appoint myself or not, but um, to the committee.
Everybody but Michael.
Can we go over what the E and I committee is actually for? Because what's listed on the website does not seem to be what is happening in the E and I committee.
Sure.
So has what's listed on the website been met, or have you tabled that, or are you not focusing on it?
Are you referring to?
I am referring to currently on our website, and this is me paraphrasing a bit, work to help new residents, provide education on town processes, engage to misuse for civic duties in the future, engage small sale housing and businesses, and develop new volunteers for small projects. But when I read the minutes, it doesn't seem like that is a focus of the E and I committee.
Um. What is your um regarding of like, or like, I feel like this could be a whole agenda item. It's like this agenda item.
Well, I didn't. Yeah, potentially, because I didn't know if the E and I needs to be termed as something different, and then these five points would be under a new committee that would actually focus on this instead of on vaporous concepts.
Uh, well, I mean, I feel like, you know, I don't know that um like helping new residents. I mean, I think that's part of what the mutual aid committee has been for, morking group was working on, was. Um, and I also feel that the committee has been unable to really figure out what it wants to do, because it's been trying to work through just functioning as a committee. And I think that those goals are still what we want to work towards, but um I believe that they would like to work towards them. And would like to see if they can do that with a different, you know, with the group that I have put forward to be. If they can't do that, then certainly could be reevaluated. That would be my suggestion, so if this group can't meet the goal set, then reevaluate and. You have an opinion?
No, I I I, I just don't know, I don't know anything about you and I, and I don't want to, so um.
Don't let Nancy Birdsall here and say.
It's just one of those things that I have zero interest in that. I mean, I have interest in our community, stuff like that, it's just that committee. Um. I mean, if you want, if you're talking about pointing the people um to the committee, I don't mean this meanly, but there isn't one person on that committee that doesn't want you make on it. That's just the way it is.
Well, that's, you know, can I have a little moment to say something?
Sure.
Um. Everyone on that committee has one perspective, and they do not like me. That's not being inclusive of, you know, allowing me to be, to participate in a, you know, a town board. And I want to be on that board. There are people that have not shown up for months. I have shown up to every single meeting. And just because I don't have, I have a difference of opinion sometimes, doesn't mean that that is, that is.
No, and I, I.
The, to the group.
Right.
In fact, the, sorry, at the last meeting, I think I, you know, invigorated a couple of people to, you know, jump into Timothay. You know, I, I nudged Nancy Birdsall, you know, there's, you know, I think I do a lot of really good things that may, maybe they don't, it's term, it's best term like this, you may not like how I say it, but you like what I say.
So. All I'll say is that I have heard from all the committee members, past and present.
Um, do we care about the town things? Because I've had town people approach me and say that when they were reading the minutes, it sounded like it was an exclusive committee, it was not an inclusive committee.
And that is a tricky piece that I have, you know, this was my choice to try to restructure the committee without a, a person who is making it so difficult for meetings to um to just get through a meeting without arguments or conflict.
Um, well, could you refocus on to these five points instead of focusing on what equity means to a handful of people and what inclusion means to a handful of people would?
I think that would be the goal, but I also feel like inevitably, because I would just like to see what the committee can do without the, the the unrest within that group. And if the whole committee comes forward and says we are having an issue with committee member, it is not unreasonable to not reappoint that committee member to the committee.
So did the, the whole committee?
I have heard from all the committee members.
But the committee as a whole did not vote.
Committee did not vote. No, it was all.
It wasn't an action by the committee, it's just.
I have, I have talked to all of them. I'm not saying that to be mean, like. There it is.
Right, so if someone has a difference of opinion, you're not allowed to.
But the thing is, no.
So I just want to move to, you know, I think having discussion, I think talking about the E and I committee in general is certainly something we can have on, on the agenda. Um, but just in terms of this agenda item. Um. Can we vote? Do we feel like we can vote on this? Sure.
Um. Sure.
All right, so my, well, my motion was that we're appointing. Is it, can I appoint myself? Is that?
You can.
In nominees. Just wanted to make sure. Uh, Rainbow, Melody, Todd, and myself. That is my merp. The Equity and Inclusion Committee. Would anybody? Can that? That second, it doesn't go forward, so.
Well, you're, you're, so you're cutting it down to a, you're cutting it down to a four-person committee?
No, Kim, Lotar.
Oh. Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor? Hi.
Bye.
Post?
No, just because I don't think it's, yeah, inclusive or equitable, but.
This is very disappointing from the issue of you, that's, you have literally like. No, there's no inclusion whatsoever, and that's, that is.
I think in a year, we can reevaluate. I'm just thinking a year to.
It's okay to have a difference of opinion.
It is.
Actually, it's actually better to have a difference.
We're gonna keep.
It is, but you have the bulk, you have all the people on that committee that.
There was.
And.
How, you can't, how can you appoint someone to a committee that if, and if every person on that committee doesn't want that person on it?
I wouldn't be on that board. I, I chose to be on the board because I wanted to be on a board that could help do something with the town.
And this can be visited, but for right now, we've moving.
Excuse me, but could you ask Pat to mute? There's a lot of interference coming from her iPhone.
Very good.
I'm sorry.
There are public meetings you're.
Oh, I, I know, I'm absolutely entitled, and I have a right to go to public meetings.
Yeah. All right, new business, Merp Grant. That's a fun acronym.
That's a energy thing that the state wants to help towns do weatherize and stuff their buildings, the application is not ready yet. They keep sending us reminders, and you know, I had to track down how much energy, electricity and fuel oil the town office used in the old town garage. Kathy wanted to do something with the new garage about the air exchange thing.
Right.
Because they switched.
New buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We traded off some heating stuff for something else, and the answer back was when I said we're interested in these two buildings, they said the state's not going to give you any money for a new building.
Hmm.
So I guess we're kind of stuck with what.
Yeah.
What got decided was the town garage, but so that hasn't come up yet. I just wanted to hit on the radar that you might get heat pumps for here.
Yep.
Um, and we might be able to do something for insulation in the old garage.
Oh, that's great.
They're going to do an assessment and then.
Yeah.
Maybe loans or something available.
Yeah. And how big of a grant is that? Do we know like how, we don't know anything. I love money comes in free, free. All right, Recreation Committee.
Recreation Committee is coming, the potential.
Twenty-seven, yes. We've said that so many times, I like be forgetting.
And so you've officially decided you're going to have a meeting on the twenty-seventh.
We are, we are now, for sure. Yeah, I know. I just put May twenty-seventh, so that wouldn't work. Um, all right, we need to appoint the alternate for the SWAC. This is you, Red Gal.
That would, yes, I'm asking you, the Solid Waste Alliance Communities as an alternate. I think Wheaton is the main delegate, and Chris Martone is the in-alternate. It seems like I'm the one that ends up going to the meetings.
Yeah.
So in order for Tim to have a vote.
Yeah.
You know, when they vote, like officers and do budgets, it would be helpful if we had two items.
I'm in favor of that. Yeah, that's reasonable. Yeah. By consensus, or do you need an official vote? Yeah.
You can do that by appoint by consensus.
Okay, great.
It's not spreading.
Uh, new nine-one-one, what was this? Um.
Renaming it or?
No, we need to name one right now, right before you get to, just after Deppert's house, before you get to Ruth Morgan's old house.
Yeah.
There's a right-of-way that goes up through to Morgan's camp and another camp and into Ira. There's more camps up there. That right now is just considered one seventy-four Morgan Road. But now Tom and Susan are giving Glenn ten acres. So he's going to put a house out there, so it's going to be a camp, and the other camp, that means that this has to be
renamed.
unnamed road, and in the past, we've always let owners on the property figure out what that is, so they would like North Metal Lane.
Sounds lovely. We just approved that by consensus also. Yeah, I like that. Eric, did you have something?
If I wrote that, I thought this one, choose my words.
Okay. Okay.
Well, we're almost done.
Uh, feedback form of you.
We do not have any.
Okay, members.
You'll get one next month.
Remember.
Actually, you'll get them next Tuesday.
Members concerned. No, uh, miscellaneous correspondence in mail.
Into that.
So. We don't need to go into executive sessions, we've already done the B and K contract. And our next meeting is on Tuesday, June twenty-seven.
And I hope there's not too much stuff stacked up for the twenty-seventh.
But, watch, and some, there's an amount. All right, anything else where we adjourn?
I think so.
You think there's more?
That's.
For adjourn. I have to sign all these things.
So for adjourned, I do have a question about the budget.
Sure.
The Cemetery Association would like to have for an increase for the lawn mowing. But Glenn was thinking that was already passed because the voters voted on the budget, but I didn't know if that was something that could be considered, or we should just wait till next fiscal year.
Typically, they increase it up. People put their budget request in when we're doing the budget in November and December. Um, doesn't mean you can't ask them more help, the select board could find some anywhere, or we wanted to ask them if they could give some ARPA money, and I don't know how much money you're looking for, so.
Yeah, um. I should note the Sunda Treasure, but I have to look at the numbers again. But I'm assuming that would be better coming from Glenn instead of me, because that might be a conflict of interest or no.
Really the treasure.
I'm the treasurer.
Right, so I mean.
Well, if you know what the number is, and at least we can think of it.
I will, I will try and.
Yeah.
So we do what, twenty-five hundred right now?
Yeah, and I want to say it was three thousand something last year that we spent for the lawn mowing.
This is with FAS?
Yeah. Forty years ago.
Well, last year, they were charging us five fifty a mowing, so.
No, we only got to mow it twice. I mean, it really hurt, because it was so tall. Yeah, but check with Glenn and we can put that on the agenda for the twenty-seventh, so you're looking for another five hundred bucks.
Yeah, probably about that. I, I think I better look at the number. I know it was somewhere around three thousand, probably a bit over, but.
Yeah, okay, I mean, we can probably. Yeah.
Doesn't it?
I say, yes.
I feel that I have so many. You have to watch me in Pacers, look free. Spanish.
And we haven't gotten a bill for them yet this year, so I'm not so sure of the amount.
Okay.
So we're good?
Yes. Adjourned. I don't have a gavel.
Well, I thought we already were adjourned.
Oh, three pens. Oh. That's my good pen, huh? But I want to always throw it away if it doesn't work. I don't want the, that one, ended that again.
That one goes though. Go in the library.
Turn off your. Oh, yes.
I think I signed all the.